Pledge allegiance to the plan of the United States of America. To the Father, which is saying, one nation, under God, in the best law, the great gene.
Good evening, everyone. Elliot, we need a roll call.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Alderman. Please answer I when I turn this mic from here.
Anybody else got their devices?
All right.
Everybody here?
Please answer I when I call your or here when I call your name for the role for this evening's work session. Alderman, louder, here. Alderman Peters, here. Navy Walt. Another person Reeves. Smelsley, here. Another person Welch.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, we have a forum for business.
All right, thank you, Elliot. And now I need a motion to approve the minutes of our Board of Alderman Regular Meeting, March the fourteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on those minutes? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. And next is we have a presentation from Bi-State on their MetroLink security assessment results. And tonight we have with us Kevin Scott and Cordell Whitlock of Bi-State Development Security. And welcome to you, gentlemen. We're glad we're glad to have you here. And Cordell, I have to say, a couple of people say you look familiar. You may recognize Cordell from.
You have a really good memory.
Yeah. Yeah. But you're still well remembered. Gentlemen, I'll turn it over to you.
All right, thank you very much.
Good, how are you?
Good, good. Stand over here. I'm actually here tonight. First of all, good evening. I won't take much of your time. You guys look very busy, very official and very busy. So I'm actually here tonight to talk about specifically MetroLink platforms. All right. We have begun a process that we are referring to a secure platform, our secure platform program, which is starting to move very quickly. So when I primarily brief you on that, but I do want to provide just a little bit of overview information before we do that. So sir, if you would, admire Jancy. So my name is Kevin Scott. I have been with Bi-State Development since September of two thousand and nineteen. I spent twenty-seven years in law enforcement within the St. Louis County area and left my agency to take this job. Okay? And why did I do that? So about a year prior to me, starting at Bi-State, they initiated an overall priority assessment in partnership with the East West Gateway Council of Governments, the area MPO, to look specifically at MetroLink. So when we talk about MetroLink, the metro transit system has three major modes of product. One is MetroLink, obviously, which is the light rail system, forty-six miles that runs from Shrewsbury to Forest Park, Lambert to Forest Park and Mary's, and runs congruently to Fairview Heights, and then the red line continues on to Charlotte Scott. Right? The second mode of transportation is metro bus. We have about four hundred buses and we're sitting probably right now at about fifty-nine routes. If anybody wants a job, we have plenty available on the bus side. So and then the third mode of transportation is called Call Ride, and it is a major paratransit service. All right? When we talk about metro transit in totality, though, sometimes we have brand confusion because everybody wants to talk about MetroLink. MetroLink is the popular discussion in the region. It gets the majority of the attention. And so back in two thousand and eighteen, they retained the services of WSP USA through FTA funding to take a look at the overall security structure on MetroLink. At the time, ridership was either stagnating or declining. There had been a few major incidents on the system. There is an enormous perception problem when it relates as it relates to MetroLink within the totality of the St. Louis region. And they wanted to delve into that and take a closer look. And so they did that. And they were only here a few minutes and they decided, well, we shouldn't just focus on MetroLink. We should focus on the entire public safety structure at Metro Transit. All right? So a lot of the things that we've done in conjunction with this has affected the entire overall, again, public safety structure, built taking it and building it into a comprehensive program. And so since September of two thousand and nineteen, that's what I've been doing. So in phase one of this of this assessment, they focused on these core areas. And they made over ninety-nine recommendations for improvement, simple fix, right? Quick, quick ninety-nine recommendations for improvement, which we have been, which we have been implementing. Phase two of this process was actually the security strategy that we produced long term relative to what their findings were in phase one. So to make this go a little bit faster, if anybody's interested in seeing those reports, the phase one WSP report or the ninety-nine recommendations for improvement, I'll be more than happy to send those your way. And then also I will always extend an invitation for you to come in one-on-one toward the facility, see what we've done. We can go over the assessments with you and show you how we're moving forward. So with that, though, as a continuation of our overall security improvements on MetroLink, we are moving to a gated and fenced format for our platforms. So this is really the focal point now. This rendition of Central West End is not an actual design rendition. This is just a concept of a gating system that we dropped in the middle of this picture to show you, to give you an idea of what what it is that we're looking for or looking at. Obviously, there's a lot of security vulnerability with this picture. But again, this is only for just a general impression. But MetroLink right now has thirty-eight existing platforms. And they will have, we will have a thirty-ninth platform at Mid-America Airport in Musketeo. We are extending MetroLink five and a half miles around the Air Force Base, Scott Air Force Base, to connect the red line to Mid-America Airport. So that is being bid for construction as we speak. Do that. So a thirty-ninth platform will come online. So why are we doing this? It was not one of the ninety-nine recommendations that was made, but it is a continuation of an investment in a total security revamping of MetroLink. I've lived in St. Louis forty years. I've watched the maturity of MetroLink since nineteen ninety-three. And you know as well as I do, this has always been a topic of conversation. We have an open concept system. The platforms are completely vulnerable. Anybody can walk on this thing. There is no fair integrity, meaning fair collection integrity. And so we need to do something to fix it. We need to do also something to create as much of a safe environment on the platforms as possible for ridership. If we ever want to see this system get to where we hope that it will be, that is a huge influx of discretionary ridership along with independent ridership and regional buy-in. We have to exhaust all of the options to make it safer. So where did this process started? Actually, it started back in two thousand and seventeen. The general engineering firm for Bi-State was tasked to take an initial look at this. They did. They produced a report and then it sat and went dormant and nothing was ever done with it. In January one of two thousand and nineteen, just nine months before my arrival, Toby Roach was named CEO of Bi-State and came in on a strong security platform. And one of the things that he has been focused on is moving forward with the secure platform plan. So in early two thousand and twenty, we took the plan that they or the analysis that they had done back in two thousand and seventeen, blew the dust off of it and turned it over to our now general engineering contractor for a second look at the general concepts of the platforms and also to conduct egress studies of each of the locations to see if this was something that we could even do once a fence, once a fencing system is in place. So they produced, as a result, the results of those egress studies as well as some very low-level elementary concepts of how a platform or the platform should be redesigned. Right? So we took that, we bid for true design of the platforms. We retained HNTV, which is a large engineering, transportation engineering firm. They are, they have a large office out here in St. Louis, are based in Kansas City, during seventy markets around the region. And we asked them to carry us through the design, develop the scope of work once the design was done and to help us fit construction on all the platforms. All right? We are not digging up platforms, changing the layout of platforms. All we're doing is taking the existing footprint and we are putting high-security gating and fencing in place. So what you will probably see is something like this, a rotogate system complemented by an ADA swing door access. All right? We're also taking our closed-circuit television structure and which is all basically old. A lot of it's analog technology. And we are replacing it all and feeding it into an internal real-time camera center. And we are doubling the amount of cameras on the system. We're going from about eighteen hundred cameras to about sixteen hundred. And that includes upgrading the cameras on all of our vehicles, all buses and light rail vehicles. We all have live feed capabilities so security can watch in real time what's going on on those cars. All right? So thirty-eight platforms will all be uniformly gated and fenced in the same way. Rotogate swing doors, high-security welded, steel welded fencing, probably somewhere in the vicinity of eight feet minimum. And the reconfiguration of the closed-circuit television. Now, to make this work, we have to integrate it into the fare collection system. So when you come in, you buy a ticket, you have, you scan a pass. That system has to communicate with the gating system and release the gate. That doesn't work and we got a problem. So the problem that we do have, though, is our fare collection system is old. It is old, 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 and it should have been updated ten, fifteen years ago. There's too many versions of fare media out there for Metro Transit, sixty-four versions of a ticket. There's a new pass every day. Nobody knows where they came from, but they all seem to work and show valid fare. So we are putting in all-new hardware and we are revamping and scaling down the amount of fare media that we actually issue to operate the system. So we're building, we have two projects going on. One is the secure platform side. One is the integration of a new fare collection system, the new fare media to include mobile application. That all has to, it's like building a tunnel from two directions and meeting at the middle. So that's what we're trying to do. All right? Next slide, please. Very quickly, how are we paying for this? So we did an independent, we had the independence cost assessment done back in two thousand and twenty. And they came up with a figure of around fifty-two million dollars. Twelve million dollars bond refinancing proceeds dedicated to security. And this is held actually in St. Louis County and is allocated for security on the transportation system. Obviously, the only caveat is that we have to present the project or we had to present the project and get county council approval to spend the money. Twelve million dollars from Illinois allocation, St. Clair County Transit District and federal stimulus money. Seventeen point two-five million in Bi-State development capital, American Recovery Plan funding. But the most intriguing thing is almost eleven million dollars in private funding for major corporations within St. Louis, which I could give you a list of, but I don't really, that's, I don't have those names. All of this funding, all of this private funding has been put in place. All of the MOUs are in place and we're ready to go. All right? Excuse me, next slide. Very quickly, all this says is that everything that I told you is being worked through in the Bi-State Development FY twenty-three operating capital budget. This project, the project, the secure platforms project has received full endorsement from all three of the elected officials in our major political funding subdivisions, which is St. Louis County, the city of St. Louis, and St. Clair County, Illinois, as well as full endorsement by the Bi-State Development Board of Commissioners, who actually want this project done yesterday. So we seem to have their support. Now, how long will this take to do very quickly? Forever if we treated it as one project. All right? If we designed this entire thing while the surveying, designed this entire thing and then bid it all in totality for construction, we probably wouldn't see gates until two thousand and twenty-seven. So we went back to HNTV and asked them to adjust their Gantt chart, give us something that was more palatable. And they came up with a phasal approach to implementation. So we're going to have six phases. Phase one will be a beta test. And that will be four platforms. They will be in Illinois Emerson Park, JJK, Washington Park, and SWIP, which is Southwestern Illinois College. The reason why we're starting small is by the time we implement phase one with the gating and the fencing and the reconfiguration of closed-circuit television, we will not have integration with new fare collections. We're moving a lot faster than they are. All right? And so we're going to have to actually staff those locations twenty-one hours a day to make those gating systems impactful. But we're hoping as we move forward with that, that they catch up from the backside and we can have the fare technology put in place as we move into phase two. So first phase is four platforms. The next five phases are seven platforms in each of those last five phases. How those, how the different locations fit into those phases, I don't know. It will, it will depend on primarily our engineers and what they have to do to reconcept those locations. So phase one, I told you about phase two will be from Delmar all the way to Civic Center, which is right outside of the Enterprise Center downtown. All right? So those will be the seven platforms there. So we're hoping to finish design and go to bid for construction on phase one in August. So what we're trying to do is as phase one moves to bid construction, phase two comes in and complete final design on phase two so that we create as much of a cascading effect as possible. Depending on how fast we move, we may decide to lump some of the phases together for, to bid out construction. The other thing is what we've tried to do in articulating how we want to position the phases, the procurement laws are different in Illinois than they are in Missouri. So we're trying to keep the locations consistent to one state or the other. So if all goes planned, phase one bids for construction in August, phase two would bid for construction in December. So the last phase, if the creek doesn't rise, the last phase would go to bid in bid for construction in November of twenty-four. So I will know more about how the different locations are positioned as we get more into this process. Now, as far as the vetting of what we're doing on these platforms by emergency services, police and fire, when we get into the design phase of locations, when we get to a thirty percent level, we will ask the police and fire districts that cover those locations to come in. We will actually vet with you what those plans are. Obviously, thirty percent, we have enough design where you can see where we're going. We also have enough time to change it if you don't like it from a public safety standpoint. So next slide, sir. And I always want to finish on this note. We have also implemented this for your knowledge in conjunction with all of those ninety-nine recommendations with the secure platform plan. We have entered, we have introduced a mental health impact plan for Metro Transit. We have entered an agreement with Chestnut Health Systems. They're located in Illinois. And we now have teams of clinicians on the system to help mitigate nuisance behavior, to provide services, bring services to the table that we, from a security or law enforcement perspective, are not able to provide. And so again, I will like to extend an invitation. If anybody wants to come in and spend some one-on-one time, I'd love to take you on a tour. There's a lot of great places to eat around Compton Spruce downtown. Take you out on the system, show you the real-time camera center that we built and walk you through the WSP process, phase is going to, and how we got to where we are now. Questions?
I was, I was just thinking that I think it's a great idea for revenue and safety. I think it's really, really neat. You're going to finish in like twenty-twenty-seven, is that it?
So last, the last phase will be in, in December of twenty-four. I'm hoping by the end of twenty-five, we can be completely finished. I'm hoping with this cascading type phasal approach, that we're shaved, we'll finish, shave about a year off of it.
And it also sounds like the fifty-two million is relatively inexpensive compared to the loop trolley, which is about fifty millionish.
Yeah, listen, I'm not responsible. They're running through one of the things for the loop trolley. I mean, we'll not take credit for it. But you know, but I'm gonna tell you, you know why we inherited the loop trolley.
Well, I was, I, again, Jeff talked to you.
So there was just very high level, and I don't want to get into a lot of the minutia, but there was federal grant money that was used for the loop trolley. If we defaulted on that, those minimum requirements, if the region defaulted on that, the region would, you know, you never would have to give back federal grant money because it affects your, obviously, your, your future ability to get FTA funding. So the region, of course, turned to Bi-State and said, hey, can you operate this thing at a minimal level until we can satisfy those requirements? And so that's what we're doing. What the long-term future of the loop trolley is, I have no idea. That's well above my pay grade. All right, well, I hope to see you guys.
I was just curious, I used to work at the Wash U Medical School campus.
Yes.
And you've got a large volume of people at certain times when they're getting off work. Um, what, I noticed there were two gates on your, your drawing here. How do you get all of those people through to catch the train?
Yeah, they'll have to come through the rotogate and swipe their fare. Now, for large events such as sporting events, that's why we have the ADA gates or the swing door type gates. We're number one ADA compliance and number two, large events. But, you know, we will monitor traffic at those locations. If we have to open the gate and man the swing door gates, it manually check fare, we will. But as a matter of practice, everyone goes through the rotogates. Now, the last thing that I will leave you with is if we put in gating systems and fencing systems that people can climb over or crawl under, this is a failed project.
Yeah.
If we put in these little cute waist-high turnstiles with paddles that go like this, they will not work. So we are going to, and I made that very clear when I was asked to leave this project, that we were going to do it, but we're going to do it correct. And I have your full support. So that's what we're doing. All right?
Are there any other, okay?
I have one more question.
Yes, ma'am.
How do we get a hold of, or us or the public get a hold of the phase one reports?
Sure. So the easiest way is to go, you can either go to the East West Gateway Council of Governments website. And they actually have those phase reports on their website. Okay? Or you can go to Metro Transit, link to public safety, and you can find them there. And if that fails, you can always call me. But I know for, I know for certain that both East West Gateway and our own website have those posted.
Would you be willing to give out your phone number right now?
Sure, I'll give you my cell phone number. Ready?
Yes.
All right, it's three one four.
Yes.
Three zero three zero nine zero three. And if you call me and I don't answer, just leave a voicemail and I'll obviously call you right back. All right?
Are there any other states that you're nearing this after right now that kind of have, are there some that set in place that kind of helps you determine how you're actually going to do this?
No, we're setting the bar. We're setting the standard. So there are some systems that are partially gated.
Take a little Vegas point. I saw the key ops on the side where you come in and get your ticket and then merge on and then train and go.
But at the end of the day, look, you guys all know that we operate in some very challenging areas. Okay? I can't change that. You know, MetroLink was designed and plopped down in the middle of an existing city. The city wasn't designed around MetroLink. Okay, so that's kind of an unusual thing. So when I got into this job, it was relatively frustrating because I came, came from law enforcement. I wanted to solve all these crimes and do all this stuff. And I, I finally decided, well, if I try to do that, I'm going to burn out in about two minutes. So what my focus is from a public safety standpoint at, at Bi-State is to create as much of a security bubble around that property as possible. And that's all I can do. Thanks. All right, thank you very much. Nice meeting you everybody. Mr. Brown, follow us. We're collecting a database. So I'll put all of the Alderman in the database. You all will get periodic follow-up email as this project progresses. And, you know, don't hesitate to reach out. I'll get one myself anytime if you have any questions. What's your phone? Mine is three one four six zero six one eight five four. I don't know anything, but I hope you're the best. Since you offered, we'll take it. Those monthly updates come out monthly. So if you're added to the list, you'll get an update. I think it's the end of the week. Well, thank you. All right, appreciate you guys. Have a good evening.
All right, let's move on to item B, Articulation for Consideration. First, we have bill three oh seven nine or twenty twenty-two CDVG Supplemental Cooperation Agreement. And we need a motion for second reading. Motion for second reading. I can, we have a second. Any discussion?
Hold on, mayor, please. This thing got overheated, I guess. I think the bulb went out. Well. I'd love to turn it off, but I don't want it to do any damage to it. Right? Either the bulb went out or it overheated us. It's going to blow out the audio with that fan, so. All right. Sounds quiet. Uh, thank you, mayor. I didn't catch the votes, so.
We didn't do the vote yet. So we've got, Lisa made a motion, Mike checked it. There was no discussion, all in favor. Any opposed?
Second reading of bill number three zero seven nine by title only. An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a supplemental cooperation agreement with the county of St. Louis, Missouri for the allocation of twenty twenty-two community development block grant project funding.
Okay, very good. And motion for passage?
Maybe a motion for passage.
Second.
Again, any discussion? All in favor?
Well, that's a roll call vote. Alderman, please answer aye or nay on the following roll call vote for bill three zero seven nine. Alderman, louder.
Aye.
Alderman Peters.
Aye.
Alderman, Alderperson Reeves.
Aye.
Alderman Smelsley.
Aye.
Another person Welch.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, that is all in favor and bill three zero seven nine becomes ordinance three zero six zero.
All right, thank you. Let's move on to bill three oh eight oh, saving the seven for made housing contract amendment. Lisa, is there anything you need to add and say to remind anybody before we undertake a motion?
No, sir.
All right, I'll undertake a motion for second reading.
We'll make that motion for the second reading.
We have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed?
Second reading of bill number three zero eight zero by title only. An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a contract amendment on behalf of the city of Shrewsbury, Missouri, with St. Louis County, Missouri, for housing of municipal inmates by the St. Louis County Department of Justice Services.
Okay, I will undertake a motion for passage.
Motion for passage.
We have a motion and second. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, Elliot.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Alderman, please answer aye or nay on the following roll call vote for bill three zero eight zero. Alderman, louder.
Aye.
Alderman Peters.
Aye.
Alderperson Reeves.
Aye.
Alderman Smelsley.
Aye.
Another person Welch.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the bill passes and bill three zero eight zero becomes ordinance three zero six one.
Okay. And now we move on to bill three oh eight oh, and I'm sorry, three oh eight one, the HR USA Service Agreement. We're looking for the first, second reading and final passage. And to remind everybody why is because we've had it delayed things like a few weeks by discussing this and, and giving everybody time to look this over. And it's eating into our summer and our self-imposed deadlines. So we're trying to get this moving. So I will, Greg, I think you've sponsored this bill. I will retain a motion for further reading.
I'll make that motion, but I would also like to have a discussion on where we ended with it on the last meeting. I'm not sure where our protocol is on that.
I think you, you want to make a different mode?
Correct. Our, at the, the last meeting, we just were going with the organizational assessment, but I.
Correct. Our, at the, uh, the last meeting, we just were going with the organizational assessment, but I, I don't know. Circle back around the salary study and see if we could add that back into it, given the savings that we did get with public works. Not having to use all the assault and what he did with the savings on the, the streets we were that we, you know.
So your, your, your motion would be to include both the organizational assessment and salaries.
Correct. And we would put them both in there for that.
If I may, um, that, those funds will be from the capital improvement fund for the savings, and this would be a general fund expenditure. I just wanted to, to point that out.
Okay, thank you. And so we have a, a, a motion, uh, to include both in the contract. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Uh, is there any discussion?
Is everybody okay with sixty-one hundred extra bucks? And that's the discussion, right of it?
Yeah. I mean, I voted no last time because this was something that the fans, that we had, that we had already talked about and we already budgeted last year. And I think that it is something that we need to do externally. We've, we've literally already had this discussion.
Right.
And that's where I was.
Yeah. And that's, I think, when we all got hung up back in November, December, that was the first thing we talked about was doing the salary study. And then if we had additional funds to be able to do the uh, other assessment in there, then we, we kind of flip-flop last week. So if we can do both in there, you know, and as Mike said there, that's sixty-three hundred with the Gov HR that we agreed upon at our last meeting.
I'll still be a nay on that because I think that we have two other studies that were done in two thousand twenty-one that I mentioned, as well as the MML. You know, and the certainness of the league is our, it does every year begin with. So it doesn't cost us anything for that, but I will look. The others make the choices that they need. I think it's redundant, but I, I will be a nay on it.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
All right. Uh, and, uh, Mike, that passes. So. My title, my title only. Oh, did I move, I thought I moved for that first reading. I haven't done that yet. Okay. So I need a, I need a first, I need a motion for first reading, uh, on, uh, and so.
I'll make that motion for first reading of bill three zero eight one.
Okay.
Second.
And we got a motion in the second. Any other discussion?
Uh, so just to clarify, so bill three zero eight one. Now.
It does say organizational operation assessment and/or a salary survey. So I think we're, I think we're okay. But I'm not a liar.
But Mike's not jumping in, so I think he thinks we're, we're all good too. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
First reading of bill number three zero eight one by title only, ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a services agreement with Gov HR USA LLC.
Okay, very good. I need a motion for second reading.
Motion for second reading of bill three zero eight one.
Grab a second.
Sure, second.
Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Second reading of bill number three zero eight one by title only, ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a services agreement with Gov HR USA LLC.
All right. I will undertake a motion for passage.
Motion for final passage.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. We need a roll call. I'm gonna.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Alderman, please answer aye or nay on the following roll call vote for bill three zero eight one. Alderman Louder.
Aye.
Alderman Peters.
Aye.
Alderperson Reeves.
Aye.
Alderman Schmowsley.
Aye.
Alderperson Welch.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, that is a majority in favor and, uh, bill three zero eight one passes to become ordinance three zero six two.
Okay, thank you very much. And now we'll move on to item E, resolution twenty twenty-three municipal parks grant commission plan and grant application. Great.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, as you may remember or recall, uh, the park board made, made the recommendation last year that we, uh, attempt to get a planning grant this year for our, uh, aging, some aging, uh, sports courts system in the city of Shrewsbury. Uh, we have a couple tennis courts that need to be, uh, tended to, uh, need to be redone or repurposed. Uh, we know that pickleball is very popular. Uh, so we wanted to make sure that, uh, before we do any changes to anything in our park system that we are, uh, we get a lot of input from the community, uh, and come up with a master plan. So the park board decided last year that instead of just going ahead and doing a project, uh, that we do a planning grant first. Um, we went, uh, went to SWT design to get a quote, and they came back at twenty-five hundred, which is five hundred dollars over what we budgeted for. Uh, but I think, uh, what we've added in there is what we need to, uh, ensure that, uh, what we do is going to last for a very long time and, and appease everyone in the city and not just a few. So, um, I'm asking that we get approval to move forward with that. That's not a guarantee that we'll get that grant, but we would like to go ahead and move forward with that. Um, and in, in addition, we, we will be seeing, uh, in, in my budget, we'll be seeing some reduction in some of the things that we are spending in our capital improvement. So it will offset that five hundred dollars.
Any questions? All right, hearing none. I'll undertake a motion to pass resolution twenty twenty-three dash oh three, the municipal parks grant commission planning grant application.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Patches. Thank you. All right. We'll move on to item F, uh, the bid review and approval of the St. Michael Avenue retaining wall replays. Elliot, I will turn that over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Alderman, um, in your packets, you'll see three bids that were received, uh, sealed, um, before, uh, uh, March fifteenth, twenty twenty-three for the replacement. Again, this is the retaining wall along, uh, St. Michael Avenue between, um, Murdoch and Devonshire, excuse me, and, um, on the, the west side of the street. This is, uh, an old railroad type, uh, retaining wall that's fallen apart. And, um, at a previous meeting, the, the board did request, uh, staff to go out and get bids for this. Um, all we're asking for this evening is a, uh, approval from the board to, um, accept the lowest bid, uh, that was received subject to, um, a stipulation that our city attorneys get a, a voice here.
Yeah. So the city has entered into these agreements before with other property owners around the city. And they've done so in the context of a maintenance agreement that would impose liability and responsibility on the landowner, other conditions on the landowner and consideration for the city funding this offense. For some reason, we can't find any record of this being done years ago, particularly with any wall. So my recommendation would be that the board approve the present, presentation of this bid to the property owner subject to a, a maintenance agreement being entered into that's acceptable to the board.
Can, can you say that in non-lawyer speech?
So I don't want the, I, I wouldn't want the taxpayers in the city to pay for a maintenance wall without getting some sort of certitude as to who's going to take care of it moving forward and who's going to be responsible for replacing it moving forward.
Now, let me ask a question. In this, this, uh, we'll entertain a motion to, uh, to accept this bid. Will that also include a motion for, uh, the, uh, the homeowners?
Basically, the motion would be, I would suggest, the motion would be uh, satisfaction, express satisfaction with the bid subject to Elliot negotiating a satisfactory maintenance agreement.
So. Going back, we, as a board, proved that we were going to take care of this wall issue. So now moving forward, we just need to make sure that we agree to, yes, this is the bid. Yes, we're going to take care of it, but we need to make sure that it's over and that we're have a satisfactory agreement.
Yeah, that would be my recommendation to extricate the board from any responsibility for this thing.
It would be their wall and.
Did you deed that property to the homeowner?
Good.
To make it their, to make it their liability.
Yeah, you could do it that way, but you can also do it in the context of a maintenance agreement. They affirmatively agree to do this.
So if they move, that was responsible.
The next property owner.
It would say maintenance agreement and or conveying the property to them, whichever is.
Yeah, whatever. You, you guys are going to have another look at it in this place.
Correct. That, that eventual agreement would be authorized by the board by ordinance. So that'll come up before the board, after those negotiations with homeowners are finalized. Um, and you guys will have the, the final approval on that.
So at what point would the vendor start to work before we have that or after?
No, after that. Yeah. Yeah. We're not going to put, pay for this unless the, uh, homeowners agree to take over responsibility for it. That, at this point, that's what the board has decided. Now, if, if the homeowners do, and it, we don't have any indication that they're going to, but if they put their foot down and say, no, we don't want uh, to ever have to take care of this solid concrete wall that's going to be there long after any of us are, are here, then we can come back to the board and say, listen, we don't think we should do this, um, without, um, ano- another vote of the board saying, put it in and we'll maintain it.
At this point, we have no reason to believe that they would.
Right.
Well, what, what would happen if we, and this is out there, and, and I don't think either party we would have this issue with, but what would happen if something where we agree to somebody, they do the work and homeowner comes back and says, hmm, it's not good enough. Hmm, we don't love it. Hmm, we still have an issue with it. Who does that fall?
Well, we can address it as a matter of fact. If they're by, as a city paying an amount of money, they're accepting responsibility.
It's all on them.
And they, they can interact with their contractor.
Tony, can you keep all the railroad ties? We can give them back to them. Have a whole truckload of dust.
Listen, I have a railroad tie about.
Depends on what kind of elements it's.
A Missouri railroad tie.
All right. Well, with that, is there any other discussion? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve this bid.
Are we going with the lower?
The laws, which is.
Alan irrigation or Alan outdoor solutions?
Alan irrigation.
I'm making a motion for that.
And subject to the homeowners accepting the wall and the liability of the wall from here into perpetuity.
Yes, just as a point of, subject to a maintenance agreement acceptable to the board.
Okay, subject to a maintenance agreement acceptable to the board. That's your motion. We have a second.
Second that.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Walls, item on its way. All right. And now we're going to move on to, uh, discussion on two items, G and H, and Chris is going to handle them both, and both have to do with the aquatic center. So, uh, Chris, how about it?
Yes, as we, as I discussed in the, uh, last meeting, uh, Midwest Pool Management, who, uh, provides our lifeguards for Aquatic Center, uh, decided that they, to be competitive, they were going to have to raise their starting salary at fifteen dollars an hour, which also raises everybody else's salary on their staffing. Uh, after several meetings, uh, we had come up with some sort of plan to reduce the number, which was originally going to be a hundred eighty-two thousand dollars, uh, which we budgeted a hundred thirty-three thousand dollars for next year's, uh, uh, lifeguard, uh, budget. Some of the proposals that were brought to us that I went to the park board with and got a recommendation that I'm bringing to you tonight was, uh, instead of closing the pool at eight PM, close it at seven PM. Uh, most people that can probably tell you if they've been there at seven fifteen, it is a ghost town. There's not a lot of people there. So we didn't feel like that would be a huge uh, issue with a lot of people. Uh, the other one was on Saturday. So on Monday through Friday, we open at noon, but Saturdays and Sundays, we open at eleven. So another option was to open at noon every day, including Saturday and Sunday. And then the last one was, uh, we typically have a head guard and a pool manager on shift at the same time. Uh, it's not necessarily required or needed. So making sure that we only have one of those on shift at a time. Um, so the, uh, uh, park board recommended, just after a lot of discussion, recommended to go with the seven o'clock, uh, closing time. Uh, they did feel that, uh, closing or opening at noon on Saturday and Sunday would not be a good idea. They, they did not want to recommend that. Uh, and then, of course, they did decide that, uh, I recommend that we only needed one head guard or a, or a manager there on time. Uh, so the, uh, agreement that was given to us is a hundred forty-seven thousand dollars, two hundred and sixty. Uh, if we go ahead and keep those hours, uh, as normal on the weekends, that would add an additional six thousand and forty dollars, which would put our, uh, do not exceed number to a hundred fifty-three thousand, three hundred. Uh, again, that is their do not exceed number. So, um, that's going to be high anyways. I don't feel that we would have a problem coming well under that number. As a matter of fact, I'll be down there making sure we do not. So, uh, I think that, uh, we can get that number very close to what we budgeted for, if not under that. So, um, but that is their recommendation that we do go ahead and change those hours. I will tell you that there are a lot of schools in the St. Louis area that, that close at seven o'clock. That's not unusual. Um, and, um, I, I have no concerns over having a head guard or a manager only having one present because they're the same age. So they're usually about two years, one or two years away. So they're just, it's just kind of over, uh, making sure that you have two managers or two, uh, management-type positions there at one time. Uh, but, uh, we don't think that that's necessary going forward. So more than happy to answer any questions.
Yes. What was the reasoning behind not opening at noon on the weekend? What's an hour? I mean, you know.
The, the thought process was you have a lot of, uh, you have a lot of families that have young children and they like to get to the pool early and then leave at twelve thirty, one o'clock to get those kids home, feed them lunch, and then put them down for nap. And they thought you might get a lot of complaints.
I mean, for us, for the pool, we would go swim for an hour and then it's perfect time to eat. So, I mean, we'll stay, get a snack. And so, but if it's noon, we're not gonna, I, we're not gonna be rushing out the door. I mean, we probably eat and then go. So I think it makes more sense food-wise, like.
Just, just a question. I was curious.
My question is, is, I mean, it seems like, it, it seems like a good idea, um, but it's not something that's set in stone, right? I mean, if it seems like an issue, it could be reevaluated once the pool opens, right? Or is it something that you have to lock in a contract with your, your lifeguard company?
You mean to, to add hours back in?
Yeah.
Uh, well, you, you're not going to want to go over, you can't go over that do not exceed number. So, um, I mean, I guess if we, I'm sure we could probably get an amendment in the middle of the summer if we needed to amend that contract. I'm assuming they would have no problem with that. Uh, so yes, to answer your question, that is certain, we can, we can adjust either way. We can also, we get to August and we think that, that we, we haven't had any rain days or anything else that might reduce ours. We can, if we see a, a slow day, we can close one of our, one of our buys of water, leave one open. We can, there's lots of things we can do to reduce some of that cost, or if we see that things are going well and we want to increase some hours, we could do that as well.
I'm curious on the prior pay and the increase, is it substantial? And also when looking at competition, they are the only game to top.
Right.
Right? Or they really don't have any competition?
They, well, they, their competition is Chick-fil-A, uh, McDonald's, uh, I mean, Chick-fil-A starts at eighteen. Um, and.
I don't know about guards, I tell you, then through the.
Well, you, you know, and, and I, I agree. And, and we saw that, same thing with our camps. We, we saw that for years and then COVID hit and everybody's paying and these kids, it's difficult to get them to do. And one thing that will get them to do something is more money now. Um, you know, if they've ever been in their culvers, there's, there's at least fifty kids every shift, every time I walk into culvers. I don't know what most of them are doing. They're all making fifteen dollars an hour.
Or are they at fire that?
Uh, in between twelve and thirteen. No, yeah, they were always, yeah, they were always tired and, so I think last year they were, they started them at thirteen.
Thank you.
Chris, with that, is, uh, it's up to the guards to place the grounds there, isn't it? For trash and.
Uh, well, it's our staff that does the concessionary. Their staff does the rest.
Okay. So just instead of, they're just sitting around or whatever, the deal is, there's always a little bit of trash out in that yard and stuff.
Yeah. I mean, they do have to have, they do have to have breaks. So we can't take a break away from them and make them go do that. But they are supposed to do that while they're on. That's what the extra, you know, they're supposed to check things. Yes.
Any other questions? Hearing none, I'll undertake a motion to accept the parks, the park board's recommendation. Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to accept the parks, the park board's recommendation on, uh, twenty twenty three hours of operation.
I'll make that motion.
One second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion carries.
Okay, Chris, now we're on to the plan policy.
Yes, so, uh, currently, and, and ever since I've been here, we have had a sponsorship program for non-residents for the Aquatic Center, so. Um, it, it, originally it was each resident that had a pool pass could sponsor up to four families. Several years ago, we did away with the uh, limit on the number of families that a resident can sponsor. You can sponsor anybody. We have some people that'll come in with thirty or forty names. We also know that we have individuals who will get on Facebook and ask people to sponsor them and get sponsorships that way. So the program that we're using now is not really what it was intended to do, and we don't feel that it really, um, serves a purpose at this point. Um, we also discussed that at the park board meeting, and the park board is, is recommending that we do away with the sponsorship program, uh, still have a non-resident pass, limits those number of passes, uh, but would give us the ability to sell more of those passes and could give us the ability to increase revenue. Could be anywhere between ten to twenty thousand dollars.
Does a non-resident cover the zip code? Is there a zip code process part of that, or can anybody throughout the St. Louis market just be like, hey?
Anybody from St. Louis Market or Illinois or wherever who, who, who wants to pay that?
I, I gotta say, I love it. I had, I sponsored somebody last year, and it was another mom that I'm friends with, and her kid desperately wanted to go to Shrewsbury Pool because they drove by it every day. And wanted to see what the cool Shrewsbury Pool was all about. And they had, couldn't like, couldn't figure out the process, couldn't find somebody to sponsor them, finally put it out there and was like, I will absolutely sponsor you. And I just gave, bless, that's just ridiculous, 'cause then I had to, and it was fine. We went, we had a play date and it was fine, but like, they could have gone at any point in time. They went, they spent money, they spent money and bought food, and they had a lovely time and wanna come back, but they could have gone, you know, years ago and had a great time, so let them come, let them spend money in Shrewsbury, let them have a great time. That's the people that we want to come and have fun in our pool, um, I won't worry.
Great, and the other discussion questions? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to accept the Parks Commission, uh, recommendation, uh, of getting rid of the, uh, non-resident, uh, sponsorship policy.
Motion.
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 We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, there we go. Thank you. Is there any old business coming before this board? Hearing none, is there any new business coming before the board? Hearing none. Elliot, do we have any citizens, uh, present, first of all, or anybody online that would like to talk to the board?
Mr. Mayor, we do have several residents in person. Maybe give me a wave of the hand if you're, nope, none of them in person are interested in addressing the board at this time. You've answered all of their questions and resolved any issue they may have had coming in here. Uh, those who've joined us via Zoom, please give me some indication that you would like to address the board at this time. Uh, note takers on Zoom, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you, Elliot. We need a motion for a closed session.
Motion for a closed session, second. Close meeting, close vote, and close record will take place at the end of the scheduled board of aldermen open meeting, such closed meeting with closed vote and closed record will take place in the ultimate conference room. Said meeting, vote and records will be closed pursuant to R S M O dot six one O dot zero two one subsection eleven.
Right, thank you. All right, and I just, I need a question on that closed session. Hearing none, we need a roll call.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Alderman, please answer aye or nay on the following roll call vote for closed session. Alderman Louder.
Aye.
Alderman Peters.
Aye.
Alderman Odenwald, or excuse me, Alder Person Reeves.
Nay.
Alderman Schmelsley.
Aye.
Alder Person Welch.
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, that's a majority in favor, and, uh, those joining us on Zoom, we will be closing the meeting now, and, uh, those who've joined us in person, this will be a closed session meeting, so we're gonna close out. Thanks, everybody.
You all will take a two-minute break later.